I call the January 8, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I apologize for my voice. Our invocation, and I'll ask my colleagues that Sam is going to be given tonight by Pastor Thornton Fry of the Biltmore Baptist Church. And as you make your way to the lectern, sir, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege because I understand that you're maybe retiring soon. In fact, this month, after more than six decades of service to our great community. And thank you for your service to our community. And then after the invocation, I'll ask everyone to stand, and Councilman Moody will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, my colleagues.
You only face you folks up there or these better-looking people out here? God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. Therefore will not we fear, though the earth be removed, though the mountains be carried into the midst of the seas, though the waters thereof roar and be troubled, though the mountains shake with the swelling thereof. There is a river, the streams whereof, shall make glad the city of God, the holy place of the tabernacles of the Most High. God is in the midst of her; she shall not be moved. God shall help her in that right early. He uttered his voice; the earth melted. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our refuge. Lord, smile upon us this evening and in the future that lies before us in your wonderful grace. We thank you for our city and all that it has meant to so many for so long. And to all of us who are here this night, make this a good meeting for our council. We thank you for those who receive plenty of criticism but often are lacking in the compliments, the appreciations, and the things that they really do for us. Bless us, I pray, this evening in this meeting. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Right over there is Mr. Moody. He'd be seated.
Go ahead, sir.
Is it time to be seated?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God is our refuge and strength, and aren't we glad for that? God bless this council, all that you do. And you need a special person to lead me through all the traffic that you've turned around. I tried to be late, but I wound up by mistake getting in the right place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First, we may have some electronic difficulty with our voting system, and if we do, we'll revert to the old-fashioned way. And I'll ask the clerk to do an oral roll call of our votes. But we'll first try the electronic system. And please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Next item of business is the approval of minutes. And we have the minutes of a call meeting of December 10, 2018. The minutes of a call meeting of December 11, 2018. We have the minutes of a regular meeting of December 11, 2018. And we have the minutes of our reorganizational meeting, which we held on January 2, 2019. It's their motion to approve, so we can consider this matter.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to approve. All in favor of the motion, please signify by voting yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for our speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
For the public's information, we have three opportunities for citizens to address council. One, through a public hearing, if in fact we have a public hearing on the issue. And you don't have to sign up to speak at a public hearing. You can sign up if you like. The second is non-agenda speakers, which come at the end of our agenda. And you can speak on any subject that you want to express your voice to City Council, but it cannot be on an item that appears on our agenda for that meeting. The third category are agenda speakers, people who signed up to speak to an item on the agenda. We operate by the city code under Robert's Rules of Order. We cannot have, under Robert's Rules of Order, we can only have discussion and debate on the question once a motion is made and seconded. Once we have a motion that has been made and seconded on an item that's on our agenda, if we have any speakers in the audience that have signed up, I'll take those first. But your comments have to be germane to the question, the question being whether or not the motion that we've got on the floor should pass. And otherwise, I will ask you, how does this relate to the question before City Council? With that, let's go to our agenda. And Madam Clerk, the first item on my agenda is item 19-14. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $20,000 from the breeding company and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to purchase bulletproof vests for canine patrol dogs.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion on the question? We do have one speaker that has signed up, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes to speak to this question that is before us, which is the consideration of the adoption of this ordinance.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Agenda item 19-14 is an ordinance accepting a grant for $20,000 from the breeding company. The money is going into the, for the year 2018-19 Grants Fund for purchasing bulletproof vests for canine patrol dogs. When money comes in for grants, we need to have documentation that reports the need for the bulletproof vests for the canine patrol dogs. We need to know how many vests are needed, what is the cost of each vest, what company are the vests being purchased from. We need to see a copy of the Police Department's budget where the money will be entered to pay for the vests. The next inquiry is communication. How did the breeding company know that these bulletproof vests for the canine patrol dogs were needed? However, the communication was done. What was going to be given to the breeding company as a trade-off for the $20,000? As you already know, the breeding company is the developer. He doesn't have money just to give away without a return on his investment. So we need to see all the communication and the deal made for the $20,000. And do I have to do it for you to get this complete information, or will the Finance Director give me the details? And by the way, who will be representing me so that I can have a dialogue to keep abreast of how the people's money is going to be spent?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And I'm going to take a point of privilege here to recognize two vice presidents of the breeding company and ask you to come to the lectern if you would, so that we can thank you for this generous gift. And that's Dana E. Wilson, who is the Vice President of Public Relations, and Barry Toplin, who is the Vice President. And on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth, we sincerely appreciate your generosity. It's important that we keep all of our public safety, men, women, and animals safe. And thank you. Would you like to make any comments?
The breeding company is proud to contribute to the safety of the community. We're happy to assist in the efforts by the Portsmouth Police Department, and it is more than an honor just to be a part of those efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, kids. This brings us to item 19-15, which is the consideration adoption of an ordinance accepting another grant. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting the sum of $37,405 from the State Compensation Board Technology Trust Fund and appropriated said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Clerk's Office to fund technology maintenance and improvements.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt the ordinance? Hearing none, ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, item 19-16, Boards and Commissions. And we do have a report from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the following appointments be approved. Behavioral Health Services Advisory Board, Roberta Hanson Union. Board of Building Code Appeals, Archie Braismore. Community Criminal Justice Board, Michelle Burton. Economic Development Authority, Ray Smith, Sr. Kyle Koglic. Historic Preservation Commission, Matthew Clope. Library, Law Library Board, Honorable Kenneth Melvin. Michelle Burton. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Charles Kalan. Heidi Eelen. Social Services Advisory Commission, Shalinda Miller. Southampton Roads Disability Services Board, Dr. Lydia Simons. Have Order Community College Board, Stephen Cantrell. Towen Advisory Board, Donald Davis. Wetlands Board, Richard Calvert.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, that we make the following appointments. So stated. Any discussion on the motion? We do have a figure in our electronic polling system. So, Madam Clerk, if everybody's ready for the question, will you call the roll on this vote? If you're for the motion, vote yes. If you're against the motion, vote no.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes. The motion carries. We come to item, thank you, Councilman Moody. We come to item 19-17, item submitted by council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Semus.
Thank you, sir. Updates on events going on in the community, reminders that our farmer's market continues downtown. But for the winter season, it is in the MM Crocken Furniture in the 200 block of High Street. You can enter off of King Street or off of High Street, and that's 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. every Saturday through March 20th, when we'll move back outdoors. I will also advise that this Saturday, January 12th, there is a homelessness summit, changing the paradigm of our perceptions about homelessness, at the Portsmouth Department of Social Services from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless will convene a senior interfaith leaders, city officials, and community partners to inspire collaboration in a more coordinated and comprehensive approach to responding to homelessness in our city. Again, that's nine to one this Saturday, January 12th, at the Social Services Building. They ask that you please RSVP that you're coming. It's open to the public, but you should call 399-0200 to RSVP. This council next week, on Tuesday, the 15th of January, has a coffee talk, community conversation council meeting. We will be at the Badawi Pavilion, Badawi Golf Course Pavilion at 7:00 p.m. for a community meeting in the style of a coffee talk at 7:00 p.m. for no more than two hours. And we invite you to come, join us, and sit at the table and have a chat.
Ma'am, 7:00 a.m.?
Did I say that? 7:00 p.m.
p.m.
p.m., p.m., at night.
Okay.
And I think I'm going to save the other items for the next meeting when we convene again.
You did say p.m. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Any other items submitted by council? Okay. Report on pending items, Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, there are none.
There are none. Which brings us to item 19-19, which is non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is David Summers. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Congratulations to our new council and re-elected council members, city manager. The reason I'm here tonight, and I'm going to organize and speak based on the time that I have, trying to play catch-up as it relates to the fire station study and how the city of Portsmouth supports the different areas of the city with that particular service. I was able to watch a briefing given by Mr. Wright in engineering on the public work session, and he used a screenshot, which I captured, and I'm going to use it as well as some other information that basically all of you have had the opportunity to be briefed on. Because the recommendation during that briefing by Mr. Wright was to relocate the Station 11, which is in the Craddock community. And tonight, I'm representing myself as a citizen, although I recently accepted the position of Civic League president for that community. But I want to stipulate out front, I'm not speaking on behalf of that community right now. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a citizen, and I'm trying to be informed on this particular issue. So, something that he recommended, like I stated, was that Station 11 should be moved. And this was based on something he phrased as internal analysis. So, I'd be curious to know, since it wasn't based on the study that was paid for, it was done internally, what were the metrics used that said Station 11? Because the study didn't bear out any particular order of stations. It bare, it bared out the fact that there were four stations that needed to be addressed over the course of trying to improve the fire service throughout the entire city. And Councilman Clark, during that particular public work session, wanted to make sure that on George Washington Highway, there's a set of tracks that, as you're looking for a location for a suitable site, that we didn't go beyond the boundaries of that particular railroad crossing. Now, if you look at the maps that were used in the study, this particular area of the city is basically an island to itself, based solely on the perfect storm of trains. You could have a train crossing on George Washington, Portsmouth, and across Victory Boulevard, and that basically creates an island. Now, honestly, what's the, what are the chances of that moment in time occurring? It's probably remote, but the idea is still the same. In that area, we're down to two stations, that's 10 and 11, and both of those are on the list. We want to modernize, and the data in there suggests that, you know, it's plausible. We're investing a lot of money and resource into 50 years down the road and trying to gauge what our demand to support the citizens is going to be. So, I understand that piece of it, but what I don't understand is, again, I'm playing catch-up, and this study's been going on for two years. I was the member of the History Committee for the Civic League. I've been working with city staff in various issues and concerns for the neighborhood. And the fact that, you know, kind of getting caught by surprise that the fire station was even, even on the table as a discussion item. And again, I found this to be stated in that December 8th. The council was briefed back in May prior to that. So you've had plenty of opportunity, minus our newly-elected council representatives, on this particular issue. I used to have a liaison, which was no longer, you know, that caught me by surprise as well. One day, you think you're working with somebody, and the next day, you're not working with anybody. But in the entire time of my interaction, there was no mention that this would be a possibility. The reason that this is connected is because, you know, there were some commitments, promises that were made to address our 45 Afton Billion Building as a community center, which used to be a public safety building as well. Our neighborhood has been inundated negatively, or impacted negatively, with crime and vagrancy right there in the square, and I've been hard-working for...
Sir, your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donnie Wyatt. Donnie Wyatt, and ma'am, do you have five minutes?
Good evening, Mayor. Can you all hear me? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and city manager. Happy New Year. While I am a member of the Craddock Civic League, I'm here tonight speaking on my own behalf. While viewing the December 8th Portsmouth City Council work session on YouTube, I became concerned with the discussion about the fire station location study. I did a bit of homework and learned that the goal of the fire station study is to ensure the eight fire stations are equally spaced within the city to provide prompt and efficient service to all. With that goal in mind, I believe relocating a fire station to the Tidewater Community Campus area off Victory Boulevard will provide equal service to all neighborhoods to include the following five bullets. Close proximity to the interstate to help service other fire stations as a backup when needed. It would improve and maintain response time to surrounding neighborhoods near TCC. It will provide plenty of land to build much-needed storage buildings to house equipment. And it would provide plenty of land to build training buildings for both classrooms and outdoor training exercises. I thank you for the opportunity tonight for me to express my concerns. I would appreciate being informed in the future discussions concerning the fire station location study because the relocation of the fire station in my neighborhood is, will have a great impact on me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is De'Andre Barnes. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I come up here today with great sadness. Two years ago, I came and spoke to you guys about partnering with youth organizations and stuff so that we can fight the crime when it comes to our children in the, in our area. One of the reasons I came up here was because I was at a, we were having a little event, and this kid came up to me, and he talked about how he was in his neighborhood playing, and some kids were shooting, and he had to lay down on the ground and play dead so he wouldn't get shot. And when I spoke with you guys about, you know, if we don't do anything, we don't invest in our children, if we don't invest in organizations in the city, something was going to happen. Fast forward, December 21st, my 12-year-old cousin was shot in the face and in the head. And we still haven't invested in our children, we still haven't partnered with organizations in the city. We had an agreement with my organization, actually, where we were supposed to partner together, but somehow that failed through. I spoke to the city manager, and she, the agreement that we had was, you know, that was supposed to help with some things, because what happens is organizations in the city rent from the city, and when they rent for the city, the cost is very significant. With that being said, it's harder to service the children in those areas where my little cousin was shot, because they don't have the money or can't afford to pay for those type of things. So when you have those type of things, those kids are sitting at home in dangerous areas and dangerous situations where they can be involved in things that may not put them in the best situation to succeed. So, one of the things I talked about is investing in our children as far as partnering with organizations who have their things together. And like I said, we worked something out, but somehow, some reason, it didn't go through. And what we still have in our city is children still getting shot and killed. Now, I did not know that my 12-year-old cousin was going to get shot and killed, but I do know, growing up out those neighborhoods, a lot of people think it's easy. It's really not easy growing up out those neighborhoods. I used to stay out Dale's home, as most of you know, and when I was growing up, I almost got shot myself, when I was just his age on the basketball court, just playing basketball. And that's what a lot of those kids today are going through. And if we don't invest in our children, if we don't put some money and make it easy for organizations to get, to use things and things of that nature, we're going to continue to bury more children. And, you know, a lot of people say, you know, government shouldn't get involved in that, it starts in the home, you know, the cliche message. Truth is, is that a perfect world does start in the home, but we don't live in a perfect world, and kids can't pick who they are born to. With that being said, we need to make sure that we're making sure that these kids have the best opportunity to succeed. So I'm asking you, City Council, to look into investing into our programs, look into investing in our kids, look into investing in our schools as well, because that has a big part in what our kids are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Carl Burden. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, members of City Council, the mayor. Some of you know me, and some of you don't. I think the timing is perfect. I also a part of the family, he was my great-grandson, that we lost. And I've come to City Council, and I've come to members about doing something for our youth. We need to go back and look at some of the programs we had, such as in the Housing Authority, they have funding where the kids can do things in rec centers. So, we need to come together and fight crime, citizens and City Council, not divide ourselves, not say, well, it's not my responsibility. It's everyone's responsibility. We lose one, we lost a lot. One of the things that I would love for this council to do, you're working on the budget. Our recreational facilities, our school facilities athletically is horrible. I've traveled around other cities and in Virginia, out of Virginia, and it's sad. It's really sad. I go on to a softball... I go onto a softball field after it rains, and you gotta take a bucket and dump water off the field before you can play a game. I mean, we should not be looking that way. We need to do better with, when it comes to our kids and our community. So, I'm asking you, would you please consider working with the school board, giving us some funds so that we can upgrade our recreational facilities with the schools and the other rec centers so we can have things for our kids? It's not just 100 kids go to camp. We need as many as possible to go to camps. So, I appreciate if you guys would take that in consideration and help us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Marquise Hunt. Marquise Hunt. Our next speaker is Walter Carter. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Walter Carter. I live at 1401 Watts Avenue. a couple of three times with the same problem. I see some movement, but it's very little. And I'm speaking of the property at 1428 Portsmouth Boulevard. They haven't done anything but brought more stuff in that they shouldn't have. I gave you guys a copy of the ordinance, and I believe that ordinance is still in effect, but it's not being carried out. And I would like to see more done than what is being done. It has made my neighborhood look real bad. And not only this property, but when one property is doing something that it shouldn't be doing and making the neighborhood look bad, then others come in and do the same thing. We have right now, on the corner of Lansing and Portsmouth Boulevard, we have big U-Haul trailers sitting on a lot, no, no, no office or nothing, and across the street, the same thing, and down on the next corner, it's the same thing. So, after a while, our neighborhood is gonna be completely ran down if we don't do something about it. And I would like to see y'all, y'all do something about it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton, would you have a member of your staff get the details on this matter, please? Our next speaker is Mark Gudalgi Atroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. My topic tonight is right relations, and that is the right relations as I see it between the government and the people. It is the role of the government in a democratic republic to serve the needs and the interests of the people, the people who elected representatives to act in our behalf. Acting in our behalf, however, does not mean thinking for us. To be good representatives, you have to be listening to your people. And it is possible to ignore the will of the people you nominally represent, but it eventually catches up with you. There are elections, there are recalls. So, those who consistently underrepresent or misrepresent their constituencies, it will be a career-limiting choice ultimately. So, when people get up at this microphone to speak on agenda items, there is a philosophy that has evolved in this chamber that we, the citizens, are bound by the same rules as the members of the City Council. I would argue that is not correct. City Council's rules of order and procedure say that Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the City Council in all cases to which they are applicable. To which they are applicable and will govern the City Council. That's the seven of you. We as citizens are not members of the City Council. We as citizens are guest speakers here. You can choose at your own peril to ignore what we have to say and do what you will. We are not participants in the debate which Robert's Rules of Order were written to establish. The following, this is from Robert's Rules of Order, 10th Edition. "The following practices and customs observed by speakers and other members in an assembly assist the carrying on of debate in a smooth and orderly manner." And then, the next several pages go on to talk about the members of the assembly, which we are not. One of the impositions on you all as members of the assembly is that your comments need to be germane to whatever is being considered. We as citizens are acting as advisors to you, advising you what our wishes are, what our beliefs are, but we are not held to the standard of germaneness that you are as legislators. And so, if I wish, in speaking about the moving of a polling place, to talk about background information that pertains to that, that's my way of making my point and telling my story. I know it may be difficult for you to listen to what sounds like a digression, but you have limited liability. When five minutes have expired on that clock, time's up. We're out of here. Whereas you and your deliberations and discussions can go on and sometimes do ad infinitum, or so it seems. So, I would say to you that you need to treat the people you work for with due respect, and we need to reciprocate that to you, and you need to apply Robert's Rules of Order to your own business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. This concludes our business tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.